But also to look at just the things that they're wanting to impact on their campus. Just for an example, we did collect data this past year with elementary counselors because they had the campus compliance coordinators. And so that was the first year that they really got freed from some of their administrative tasks. And so, um, just any quick. So I just wanted to share that they had over 10,000 guidance lessons that they delivered. And, can't find that slide. Okay. And they had, so they had 10,000, and I believe that they had about 4,000 group sessions. And then they had, well, we'll just stick to that.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen?
Of the college and career readiness update booklet.
Thank you.
As far as listed.
Page fourteen. Okay, so there was 9,262, thank you, Mr. Tossan, by the way. 9,262 guidance lessons, 2,492 small group, and 10,126 individual counseling sessions. So this is the type of data, as well as what were the lessons that they presented on, what were the type of groups that they had that we will present each year to just attract their progress. So I'm going to have Dr. Garcia finish with the special education and some of the updates that we've made in the college and career readiness plan related to that.
Thank you. Thank you. You have this information in your book as well. And initially, you heard me mention that we've added, made some changes, and a lot of them have to do with our special education population. We mentioned them throughout our targets, but not with enough specificity as we would have liked. Anyway, this slide right here shows that the targeted measures that were added. And so if you look at page, they start on page fourteen of this book. I just want to call your attention to page fifteen, which is where they actually start. Performance target one, we added three performance targets directly related with special education. I'm not going to read them to you, but the first one, under equity and access, is measuring the percentage of students in grades nine through twelve that are also special needs students in advanced academic courses. Again, advanced academic courses are pre-AP, AP, and dual credit. And of course, IV, which we don't have in this district. So we added three. On performance target two, completion and continuation, we also added another three directly related with special education. And that was students, special needs students graduating with a CTE coherent sequence. And the next one was completing an advanced course. And then, a very important one was continuation. If after taking one course, did they continue to take advanced courses or did just stop after one. So those are the kinds of measures that we added. We also added it to the PSAT Plan SAT to specifically mention that the special needs population. And another one, under performance target four, about post-graduation. On performance target five, we've actually added to every single one. On that one is on teacher support, the statement, "Teachers will also be trained in differentiated instruction strategies to meet the needs of diverse learners such as our special education and ELL students" was added. And performance target six, we added the one on college and career readiness. This is accomplished through targeted transition activities and individual planning. And you can kind of read the rest that's specific for our special education population. You have the data with exact numbers. We have percentages up there. But if you notice, the data that we have for special education students is 203 of our students with disabilities attempted an industry certification last year. And then 136 successfully earned that industry certification. And 4.2% took one or more advanced academic courses. And they're split by pre-AP and AP. And the actual numbers are on page sixteen if you want to look at numbers. One of the things that we will be measuring is, if you notice, in your book, it says only two special education students were enrolled in an academy last year. So that's the reason for us adding more specificity that we need to track the students. And why or why not are they applying or attending an academy? Okay? You want to set the last slide on that? Okay. The next step is to increase the participation in advanced academic courses with these students. We're working on that. And evaluate our current systems, like teacher mindset. And, you know, a lot of times, it's just for teachers not knowing that because you're a special needs child, doesn't mean that you have any cognitive impairment that can't keep you from taking advanced courses. We, I think one I always talk about is our twice exceptional children that are many times neglected, are both gifted as well as in special education. And evalu, we've done a lot of work with helping all counselors understand that it doesn't matter who the student is, we treat them holistically, and they all are your students, whether they're ELL students, they're gifted students, or they're specialist students, A through H, if that's your part of the alphabet, they are all yours. And you work with all of these students. And we talk about that holistic approach a whole lot. And I think we've changed a lot of mindsets because I'm not, we're not hearing anymore, oh, he's special ed, we don't do their four-year plan, or there's, especially that we don't do this. So we do everything. And we are also looking at our process as well. And in 2015, 16, we want to focus on transition services through increased collaboration and training among all of us working and talking together. Okay? That's the next one. I'm going to let you do your big one there. Here it says equitable and increased enrollment in advanced courses for all student groups is one of the big focus areas for us. Expanded dual credit offerings, we've got a long way to go there. We've struggled with the two colleges that provide services to us, but we continue to go back to that well and keep drawing from it and keep getting them to please help us and, because for a lot of students, that dual credit is more appropriate than advanced placement. Okay? Improved post-secondary planning and transition for students with disabilities, we've got a ways to go there, and we're working on that. And implement the developmental guidance and counseling plan. Steve just went over it. We've developed it. Now we're going to make sure we implement it, and we monitor it, and we, and gather data as to what percentage of time every counselor on every campus is spending within those four components.
Thank you. So our mantra for college and career readiness, our vision mantra is eighty twenty by 2020. And we want eighty percent of the class of 2020 to be directly enrolled into college. That would be the highest level that we've ever been in Fort Bend ISD. And that's the eighty. And the twenty is 20,000 AP exams administered in May of 2020. So those are, that's kind of the goal that's pushing us. I think that sometimes we think that it may, we maybe could move it higher with the growth that we've been experiencing. But for now, we're excited about the eighty twenty by 2020. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you both very much. That was very informative. And I'm sure the board has some comments or questions that they'd like to make. Well, maybe I'm not so sure. Well, Mrs. Tossan.
First. Let's go and let everybody else go.
I hear you.
Okay, so I'm going to start back at the beginning and just go through a couple, a few things. First of all, Avid. So, well, first of all, thank you guys very much for going, for working so hard on this and making some changes and bringing it back to the board. We really appreciate your focus and how much work that you've poured into this, truly. So getting back to the Avid program, you guys said we're offering that as an elective on several of our campuses, and you propose expanding it schoolwide and then district-wide. So give me an idea of what that looks like. And I don't know how long we've had Avid on our campuses, but why we chose to go with elective. I assume it's a big, it's a big deal to implement schoolwide. Can you give me a little background on that?
So Avid has been in our district for, since 2007.
Okay.
So we've had it for seven years. The Avid, Avid starts as the elective class. And so those are, Avid says that about 10% of an Avid campus should be, should make up the Avid elective class. And that, that's really the targeted time of equipping and supporting these students. And so, but what Avid is saying, in order to be, in order to reach the highest level of implementation, which is a demonstration site, which is our goal. And, you know, we will someday soon sit before you and talk about a demonstration school that we have. It's something that we're on track for. And so that demonstration, that is, the Avid strategies are evident and being implemented on the entire campus. So not all students will have the class, but students will benefit from the, from the strategies of Avid. And those are, you know, like I talked about, organization. There's also, there's also instructional strategies. Just really quickly, there's WICER, which is writing strategies, inquiry, collaboration, organization, reading. And so, you know, when we, when we go on an Avid campus, we should see, when we go into a classroom, a science classroom, first of all, we should see that the teacher is teaching with Cornell notes, students are taking those notes. And that we should see some evidence of some of those strategies. Those strategies should be posted, actively being utilized.
So they permeate all classes?
They permeate all classes.
Okay.
Exactly. And so the Avid site team is made up of a representative from each of the core subjects. And so, and in addition to that, every year we send, you know, we send more teachers to it. So even, we could have a solid Avid site team, but we choose, the next year, we choose like five to eight more teachers to go. And so more and more of the campus is being trained in the Avid strategies. And so it's not that all the kids will be in the elective classes. They won't be, the 10% will be, but the rest of the school will benefit.
Will benefit from it.
Right.
So just as a comment to that, sounds really good to me. Because what I'm seeing as a parent of three children is that we're, whereas when I went through school, there was a lot of focus on outlining and note-taking and organizational skills when I was in school. I think we're seeing more and more of that go by the wayside because we're focused on the teaks and the substance, which is great, but we're losing a lot of the how-to. You know, how do I study? How do I take notes effectively? How does this translate from listening to note-taking, to creating flashcards, to studying to, so I assume that that's, that's what that, what the Avid program is going to do for our students.
Absolutely.
Schoolwide and district-wide.
Let me just say that Avid is now also in elementary schools, just fourth and fifth grade, and it's exactly the model you're talking about. That is where the teachers are actually trained. But it is, I call it, like, we pick, we have, we select the Avid students for an elective. They have to meet a certain criteria. So I always say, Avid in fifth and sixth grade is really where there's equity and access because everybody gets it. Because the teachers get it, and it's a framework, so they begin. But as Dr. Dupree pointed out, that's, it's excellent to have it there, but you have to build capacity and bring the programs to scale. Because if we start doing that in every fifth and sixth grade, we better be ready for, I mean, fourth and fifth grade, we better be ready for them in the sixth grade.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear that. But I definitely like the way that that's going because I think that's the piece that's missing as we're transitioning from our elementary schools to our middle schools. So, okay, going to the SAT ACT test prep, I noticed here that the Department of Assessment says on page nine, the Department of Assessment offers regular PSAT and SAT prep courses for Fort Bend ISD students at Quail Valley Middle School. So my obvious question is, are we, why are we not offering it at our other middle schools? And are we looking at expanding that to identify students that can taste, take those prep courses in order to prepare?
So I'm not sure of the history of this, of the site of Quail Valley, like why that was selected as a site. One of the most popular courses is the targeted course for the PSAT for the National Merit Scholars. They target the top scorers, send out letters, and invite them to come. And so that's, that's been the one that has had the best response. The other, like, the other SAT classes, I think last year, if I remember the book correctly, I think there was about eighty students that took it last year. And so one of the things that we discussed as a, as a team, and as a team, I'm talking about the Department of Assessment and curriculum, is if, if SAT is moving towards free test prep, because we partner with an outside vendor for these courses, so how can we utilize that without that free resource and not charge the students? And so one of the, one of the things that we're recommending is to not have that, is to not have that course, but to make sure that the students have a structured access to the free test prep that they, that they have.
So, and that's great. I did see that, and I think that that's great. And I saw that we're moving to that. But how can we allow students in other middle schools to access some of that PSAT, SAT test prep? Because I know, for example, Baines Middle School had a seventh grader last year that was identified as a potential national merit, and he...
The Duke talent search.
Yes, exactly. And so we are identifying some of those kids. And so I guess as a board member, I would like to see all of our middle schoolers have access to that so that they can build, you know, build that preparation in and be able to, because, you know, we have our kids in our pre-AP classes all over. And I assume Quail Valley Middle School is targeted because of the academy, because they're the GT Academy. That's, I assume that that's why. So I would like to see us expand that, especially as we're trying to expand the services that we're providing, you know, for students to take pre-AP and to be better prepared as to take the AP courses. I would think this would be a key component to that.
So I want to jump in there and clarify that. Because is this, does this sentence mean that the physical course is being offered for multiple grade levels at that site? Or does this sentence mean only students at Quail Valley Middle School are eligible for those prep courses? I think that's where I'm...
Okay, so I assumed it meant only students at Quail Valley Middle School.
I read that, too. I underlined the same thing you did. But I'm, but I don't know. I don't think that's accurate, so I'm just checking.
Right.
On the meaning of the sentence.
Yeah, so the, so basically, the, first of all, the, so the SAT, the, or the PSAT National Merit Prep, that's all rising juniors that, from all over the district that converge on Quail Valley to take this course. And then also the SAT, which is mainly juniors that are kind of in the mix of the SAT, but there are also some sophomores that take it. The SAT prep course is available to all students in the district. Now, I think that's one of the areas where, you know, personal letters were sent out to the National Merit Potential. But I don't think that the advertisement of the SAT class was that prominent. And so that's something, you know, if we're going to continue with a course, that's something that we're going to have to, have to do better. And so that was a location where that, those test prep activities, and I don't...
It's just the location. It's not, you're not saying only those students have access to it.
Right, it's a location.
Yes, I think it's the location, so...
No, that's a good clarifying.
Let me just, let me just say that when the... Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you might highlight that in your booklet, so that...
Yeah, right. Because that's the way I read it.
Most districts have a program where they want to sort of harvest national merits. And so what they do is, at the end of the sophomore year, they take the highest-scoring kids, and they put them through a very rigorous summer program because they're almost there. And, and so they know that they can, you know, get to that. But that is much more rigorous than just a prep course for the PSAT or the SAT. This is really, they are trying to increase their number of national merits.
Okay. I think, I think that makes sense now.
I can see, after rereading, and I can see what...
Yeah, it looked like it was only offered only at Quail Valley. And so, of course, my little radar went up and went, well, why only that? So, okay.
Understandable.
Thank you very much for that clarification. My other question about the SAT is that, so we, and we've discussed this before, SA, so they are changing SAT in order to align it with Common Core. How are, how are they not? I thought they were.
No, not to align it with Common Core. They, they, they're, it's actually, looks more like the ACT now, because it's more aligned with what kids' learning class instead of a high-powered thinking IQ test. But you might be...
It was my understanding that that's where it was going, but if you, if you say it's not...
No, and actually, we have three representatives that, on a national committee that are looking into that, and it's the principal of Ridge Point High School, and Kelly Fox, who's here if she wants to answer any questions. And who's the third person? Oh, and Dr. Whitbeck. Dr. Whitbeck, go to those meetings. They were concerned about that, that people, so they, they gathered people from all over the country to do that. You might be confusing it with the fact that the new CEO of SAT was the, the person behind the Common Core.
Well, I didn't know that, but that was separate and apart from what I had understood was going to happen.
Well, I can also say that College Board started this process in 2013. So they, they're looking at what colleges, you know, the essential skills that colleges were looking for for successful students that they, and also, they were looking at what is being taught in high school across the country. And so the president, you know, I heard him speak about the new SAT, and he talked about, because he was speaking to Texas people, that he talked about that, this was, you know, that they, they did look at the Common Core, but they also looked at other things throughout. For example, you know, they were very confident that it aligned with the, with the teaks of Texas. And one of the, the big reasons for that is that they wanted, they believed that excellent instruction in high school should be the best test prep for, for students. And it shouldn't be some process separate from high school that students that have access to kind of the secret sauce can succeed, but the kids that are doing really, really well in high school, you know, if they don't have access to that, then they weren't doing as well. And so they really wanted to align it with, with curriculum throughout the country that, that's being taught. And so I think, you know, that may be part of, part of that.
Standards. Did you have something else on that?
No, I have a similar question, though, because that, when we think about curriculum on a national level, that's what comes to mind, is the Common Core curriculum. And so, and because of the CEO, we felt there was some alignment. Mrs. Vordakas, do we do like to make a comment? If she can, let's get the microphone.
I just wanted to add to the conversation that the College Board has created an alignment document that is showing the relationship between our, the standards for the SAT, as well as the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, our teaks, and the Texas College and Career Readiness standards. And that's what this document is, and that's what my team's working on right now because this just came out. They're also going to be putting together some alignment documents related to the PSAT eight-nine and the PSA ten. So we will definitely use those to make sure that our areas that we focus and emphasize and everything are aligned with what's going to be appearing on the test, which I'm very confident in that it is. Just, just having looked at this already, it's very aligned with what we're doing in our classrooms already.
Good, thank you, Mrs. Vordakas. That's helpful. Yes, Ms. Hellinger, welcome.
Sorry for my tardiness.
No, no problem. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I have a question. Could you tell me, I was trying to get some pre-reading and get some information on this. Can you tell me a little bit more about the career portion of this? I saw a lot of, a lot of information around testing and AP and all that, but where's the career portion of this program?
So one of the, and if we think about middle school, so one of the, the essential components of, of middle school for career readiness is that they start as an exploration process, and that they kind of start the exploration in sixth grade, but they start to narrow it down in six through eight. So one of, you know, one of the critical things of Naviance is that that was something that the sixth graders and the seventh graders and the eighth graders will do each year, is to do that career assessment, to look at which career cluster are they best aligned with, to start really getting that idea. And then every time they, careers come up and clusters come up, then they get to research those careers and figure out how much money they make. And so one of, one of our goals for, for next year, because the kids kind of got on the system, is to really, to really help them with what, like, what does this connect to? Like, why does this matter? You know, what are some essential things to look for in a career? How to attach those to a major? So I think for, for middle school, kind of that, that exploration. And then obviously, in high school, they're, they're really starting to nail down that through, through the guidance lessons, through Naviance, to nail down what kind of careers that they want to, you know, what skills are necessary in those. But I'll say with, I'll say, just kind of some initial thoughts I had with the question is that I think it's something as a department that, you know, thinking about, this was, this past year, my first year, a lot of our team members are new, is that I think that that's, that's something that we need to take to, to another level. And I think that we have, that there has been more of a focus on the college readiness aspect than the career readiness aspect. And I think one of the, the key parts of that is for us to continue to collaborate with CTE. You know, they're doing some, they're doing some, having some really cool initiatives with just the HB5, the career pathways, to making sure that the students that, once they select their endorsement, that there's some really good, that they're on a career pathway towards the endorsement. I think one of the things in the past in high school that the students sort of took these random courses, they didn't know what it was connecting to, it wasn't connecting to an interest, where now they need to select that endorsement, and then it kind of takes them through the essential courses of that endorsement. And then also, one of the things that Meredith is looking into, the Director of CTE, is the ACT Work Keys, which this is an assessment of the soft skills of what students need to soften, and the hard skills for what students need to be career-ready, to be work-ready. And so that'll give us an assessment, kind of an assessment baseline of where our students are. And then they can earn certain work key designations depending on how they're, and how they're scoring. And so those are just some of the things that come to mind. But I think that, I think that you did pick up on, on a gap, and so I want to acknowledge that as well, and that is something that, that we need to...
Well, I would, I would take issue with the word "gap" because I do think that there's a direct connectivity. I mean, the CTE planning that we're doing right now, and actually, next week, you're going to hear a full report on our CTE planning. And Meredith, I was previewing her documents today, and she's making direct linkages to the CCR plan and the work they're doing in, in career and technology as well.
Dr. Dupree, if I may, this department is college career readiness. So their emphasis is getting students ready, counseling them, interest inventories, helping develop confidence through programs like Avid and strategies that increase participation in rigorous coursework that would build confidence, motivation for students to pursue. Whereas Meredith, with the CTE, that is the career emphasis. And you'll see that in that other, that other presentation. So I think if we think of this department as the, the floor of preparation for, for college and career, to, to set students on the path, whether they pursue college or career, they, they're academically able, they're socially, emotionally confident to pursue. Then we have advanced placement for our very highest students, our gifted students. We have academies for special interests, but CTE is that career component. And you'll hear more of that.
Thanks, Billis. So are we saying, then, that everyone has opportunity to these programs? It's not based on, you know, whether or not you're taking the AP classes? It's, so everyone has opportunity to, to benefit from this program, whether or not you're in the higher-level classes or not, whether or not you're a national scholar or not?
Oh, absolutely. Some of us were never national scholars, and, and we're living proof that, you know, we went to college, but we're still working. So, no, we definitely emphasize that. I promise you.
I didn't, I didn't kind, I didn't really hear that even in the short period that I was here. I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear the presentation. My son was playing football today. I had to go to the...
And that comes first.
I, I don't remember the exact figure, but they had 200 and something special education students who pursued an industry certification. That's a industry certification for a career. And 136, I think, of those were successful in receiving an industry certification. So that's an example of a little bit of the, the data that, that was presented relating to certifications related to industry and career, and even special education students with their success.
Yeah. And I think a lot of this is around how to identify students and get them in the right places and where they need to be so that they can reach their full potential. And I think that's what they're all trying to explain is, some, that's kind of where this is. So, yeah, they've kind of pushed more maybe in some areas and a little bit less in others, but maybe after next week, it'll all kind of tie together a little bit more. So we'll, we'll see. This is, Mr. George?
I greatly appreciate this update because we had talked about, when was that, three months ago, six months ago, something like that? So you're coming back with this update, and I, I greatly appreciate it. And I see that there is a lot of improvement in this area. And especially, I happen to have an opportunity to talk to the person who is in charge of Avid program at Willow Ridge. And I see that it's been, it's been phenomenal there. I'm very excited to see that. And also, you mentioned about, you know, the AP exam, three or more going to get a college credit, kind of, if you had to give a college credit. And actually, myself or my son was a victim of that because he had, I think, around 26 credits, and the college only took 18. So, so that's actually a very good thing to hear. And also, here I see that we have been given the logins, you know, how many people log into this program. And, and I'm sure we exceed our expectation. And I know that... And I know that we are pursuing perfection, maybe, you know, going, making, kind of improving it. My question to you is that I see that whenever we implement certain programs, and I see there's a lot of inconsistencies across the district, you know, when it comes to some school, take it to their heart and run with it, and some schools doesn't do a good job. And, and I'm sure we, I had the same question last time, too, and I'm repeating it again. And would you please explain to us, what are the plans in place for you to monitor? As, for example, I give you the program Naviance, you know, some school did a phenomenal job with that, and some school, and I always ask children about it, you know, when I get an opportunity to interact, and what are you going to do? Have you heard about this? And, you know, some kids said, "Yeah, I heard something about that," you know? And I think that is not, that is not acceptable. They should, they should have heard about it, and they should be part of that. So, and again, I'm not trying to, you know, we are in the process, so I'm not saying, I'm not taking away anything you're doing. It's absolutely wonderful. But what kind of plans you have in place so that we are monitoring every campus? Because success is only going to come from, you know, when everybody's, everybody's embracing this, you know, not few schools, or few kids, or few campuses. Would you be able to give me an update?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. One, we have a, we have a scope and sequence, and that's in, in the document. And so that's, that's the expectation of all the counselors to, for each of the grade level, to take the students through that lesson. And one of the things that we push out from the district is we, we push out that task to each student. And so if it's a sixth grade, sixth grade students that complete the career cluster, we push that task out. And so that, that way we can measure, like, for, on this campus, this percentage of students took that, took that. And so we, we can monitor that, and then we can follow up with, you know, support, training. And another thing that, that we're meeting with as well is a Naviance Task Force. And so we have a mixture of people throughout the district that we're looking at, like, how can we continue this implementation? We actually have a meeting tomorrow night, you know, what, on the ground, what are you struggling with, what are your successes? And we keep having some of our best practice users and some of our, we call them super users, we have them, they're going to create a webinar that we're going to push out to all students, or all counselors on August, or on October 9th, and just push it out and also follow up with just some targeted training. And so that, that really is our goal to make sure that all, because the reality is, is not all of our, of all of our users, especially counselors and advisors, not all of them feel super confident with it. And so that's part of our job at the district level is to support that, to figure out where the needs are. And as I said before, we can, we can track pretty closely which campuses are struggling with. And we've, you know, we've had, we've gone out, we've had campuses, you know, give us a plan of how they're going to do things differently for this next year. And so, and some of those campuses have responded really well to the support and also just, you know, them kind of self-assessing, setting their own goals for next year. And so I think those are some of the, some of the.
Thank you for explaining that, because that was my question. Is there any way you can monitor who is struggling with this? You know, you just mentioned you, you are able to, we are able to do that.
Yes, you can tell by, you can tell by logins.
Sure. Right.
And also just completion, also just the student engagement.
Okay.
That varies widely depending on the campus. And so obviously the staff is creating excitement for it, and, you know, because the students, we have structured time with them, where we take them into the computer lab, so all students can, you know, get on it and play around with it and do the structured activity. But we also have some, some tasks that we just, that we just push out to the students, or that counselors can push out via Naviance, and a lot of the students will, will complete it without any sort of structure. But though, but of course, not all students do that, but so there's kind of a variation of some structured activity and some tasks for them to just to complete on their own.
Right. And that is my question, and counselors are doing a good job. And of course, we are promoting using teachers also, right?
Right.
Because teachers are the one interacting with these students much more than a counselor.
Right. So that will, that's definitely, that's definitely within the next phase of implementation. We have some teachers on the task force that, that love it and that use it, and so we're trying to, we're trying to figure out, number one, they need to use it for, for applications. So if a, if a student wants to, you know, wants you to do their recommendation as their teacher, they send it via Naviance, they contact you via Naviance, you send back to them via Naviance, "Hey, I got your, got it, we'll finish it." And then they, then you finish it and upload it. So the teachers need to feel confident with that, and that's something that the advisors are training them, how to do on their campus. So that's one thing. But there's also, like, like you're saying, there's, there's a huge amount of opportunities for them to use in a classroom. Naviance has lesson plans, and so that's kind of our next challenge, is how to, how to get that message out to the teachers and how to get them trained. So, you know, one of my long-term goals, not that long-term, but is to have it built in some of the curriculum of our courses, that take your students to, through Naviance to research a mathematical career, and then have a lesson plan based on that. So it has, it has that kind of potential. And that's also going to create greater student interest, once they get on it during, using class time, and so.
And also small children, like, you know, I have personal experience last year with a seventh grader, she's coming home and saying, "Oh, I played around with it, and I'm, I'm good at this." You know, like, see, finding out at that age, she said, "I'm good at medical," or if I, if it's not, it is teaching, or their choice is transportation, kind of stuff. Because it gives, I believe we need to talk to our children very early to go to college, and, you know, the importance of going to college. And of course, we know that everybody's not going to go, but still promoting that on a regular basis, even from elementary school.
Right.
From the beginning, so.
And Naviance is, is coming out with a elementary product, and they've talked to us about the potential of maybe being part of the pilot for that.
Sure.
So, and it's, it's that same sort of, kind of career exposure in a fun way to kids in a young age, which is a really big part of the elementary career, is just exposing them, and also, you know, just giving them a sense of that these kind of careers are out there.
Sure.
And that there's, that they're attainable.
So this update is going to be every six months? Or what is that? The, the next time we are going to see you about this particular, what we are doing?
Well, Mr. George, we'll work on the agenda, and we'll figure that out.
Okay.
I greatly appreciate your help, and I'm, I'm very excited about what is happening, and, you know, look forward to hearing further.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I think early on you mentioned that in a previous report we'd received were the full list of goals and performance targets. Can you remind me where that was? Because I was wondering about that.
Are you talking about the original plan?
Yes.
And I brought some extra ones here for.
Would you please be sure?
And there's a lot on careers there, because we do know a lot of our.
Okay, so the full amount of goals.
Mr. George, please.
Are in the, in that original.
Yes.
Plan from 2013. So I'll look for that. Thank you. And then another thing that you, you touched on, well, you, you seem to have emphasized in this report as a, as a goal for this year coming, is getting more special ed students in some advanced academic courses. And I just wondered, do we have a system in place, and I know you're, and so you're using the PSAT data a lot for targeting students to get them into these advanced academic courses. But I'm concerned, Ms. Hellinger brought this up, I think, last week or last month, about making sure that our special ed students' accommodations are properly accounted for so that, and, and on file, or whatever the terminology is with College Board, because they'll struggle to be successful, and then we won't be able to identify them if we don't have those accommodations in place for the administration, administration of the exam.
Of the PSAT and the SAT?
Well, particularly the PSAT, because that's what we're, how we're tar, what we're using, right, to, as I understand it, that's kind of your sole mechanism for, or one of the main mechanisms for identifying these students. So I'm, do, are you following my logic? I'm trying to point out the logic here.
Yes, but it's, you know, it's not the only mechanism, because we're being more inclusive. In other words, as, as Steve said, as far as before, we used to have, actually, this district had a rubric for what students went into pre-AP and AP, and you had to meet this rubric, like, so many grades and attendance and all. We don't have those rubrics anymore. And if we see the potential in the student, and if a student is, doesn't come up and say, you know, "I want to be in this pre-AP class," and a parent wants them to, they, they can go in there and, and start the class and try the class. As far as, you've asked two questions here. The other one is about SAT having the right documentation for accommodations for the test. Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, I want to make sure we have a system in place so that students' accommodations are put in place with College Board, so that when the test is administered, they can have the appropriate accommodations for their special needs.
Right. And actually, College Board is the one that, that determines whether they will provide the accommodations or not. And parents have to fill out an application and send the forms, and sometimes they ask for medical records, and there's, there's not a lot of accommodations that they allow, but there are some, you know?
Yes.
And of course, some are the, the ones we know, physical kinds of things, like if a student needs braille or large print, extended time, you know? But they don't allow things like reading the test to a student. So we always, and we, we talk to parents, and, and we tell them that we really don't have, we may be accommodating the students in, in certain ways, that doesn't mean that College Board will.
Right. So do we have a system in place to get those accommodations set up? Do you have a system in place, a mechanism in place with the counselors so that they know that by eighth grade, these need to be set up for the students, if they're available, at least applied for?
Wait, because there were students that were not accommodated that should have been accommodated. That's why she's asking the question.
But I just talk from personal experience. My son was given the PSAT test. I wasn't aware that he was, the test was administered to him. And I, and when I received his scores, there was a lot of conversation around his score, I'll just put it that way. And I asked him, I said, "Did you get your accommodations?" And then he said, "No, I didn't get accommodations." I did go back to the school, and the school said, "Well, we know in May," I think it was April or May, "that they were going to administer the test for that spring, I mean, that fall." That's ample enough time to contact the parents of those children and say, "This is a district policy or recommendation that we will be administering the test in October. Please go out and fill out this paperwork on the college readiness test." So that way you can get whatever accommodations are afforded to you at the time. So it needs to be some type of process. When we say, "Hey, we're doing this test in October," I think is when it's given, the PSAT, the parents are notified. If they're not notified at the end of the school year, they're notified at the beginning of that school year, so they have ample enough time to apply for those accommodations. It makes a big difference in the child's testing and morale.
Yes.
When he's, he or she has taken that test and has, it feels like he or she has been given the opportunity to succeed in those tests.
And I would just say to, to answer your question, it's something that, it's definitely an, an area of growth for us, and it's something that we started the conversation with special education about, that we need a system for this. For example, during the transition from eighth to ninth, that this conversation is brought up with students that, you know, "Your student is going to be taking, you know, potentially AP classes starting in 10th grade. They're also going to be taking the PSAT in 10th grade. There's accommodations available for, for these tests. Here's the process. Here's a website. Here's your contact person on campuses." Because right now, that, that contact person is very different from, for every campus. On some campuses, it's not exactly clear who owns that process, because it's a pretty, it's a, it's a big process to, you know, to walk the parents through this, but it's a, it's a needed process, and it's worthy. And so it's something that, that this past year was definitely caught, brought to our, you know, I could tell that there wasn't a system, and that's something that we need to, we need to move on, and we need to put that in place.
Excellent. Well, we'll look forward to hearing more about that soon. Does anybody have any additional questions regarding this?
Yes. Well, special ed in general, or just that in particular? Because you can keep.
About the whole, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
I wasn't done, so, yeah.
Keep on, please, Mrs. Tosson, we're back to you.
So, so sticking to special education, I was very glad to see that we incorporated these, these goals into our performance targets. One of the things I would, I would suggest, or would like to hear more about, I like that we're looking at the advanced academic courses and the AP courses, but one of the things we might want to think about is targeting kids in special education for just regular education classes. Because I know we're, we're, as a district, we're going to more inclusive practices in general, but from a college and career readiness perspective, getting kids more access to just the regular education classes sometimes is a big enough step than just looking at the AP classes or the ACC class, AAC classes. So is that something we should be considering in our college and career readiness plan? And what might that look like? Because we look at equity and access, for example, is our performance target number one. So AP, great, AAC, great, but for some kids, equity and access may just mean getting into the regular education classes in order to prepare for advancement post-secondary.
Yes, and as you remember, Mr. Son, that we presented Phase One of that interim report on our special education that we brought forth. And one of the big goals there as well was to have more inclusion, and we've hired, and I can let Dr. Hill address that, we're working, doing extensive training at the campuses, but that to me is, should just be a given. I mean, those students should be, it should be mandated, it should be in the best class where the student can be the, the successful.
And I, I mean, I agree with that. I just want to make sure that we don't lose it, you know, as we're presenting this and presenting our plan on college and career readiness, I just wanted to make sure we weren't losing that.
I see it more as a philosophy and a mindset change as opposed to a programmatic change.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you. We definitely have some work to do.
Can you make sure that, I think we need to make sure it's on, and if you could say your name, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Deana Hill. I'm the Executive Director for Special Education, and this is my first time to be here with you guys, so thank you for having me. And let me just talk a little bit about your question about making sure our students have access to the regular education. And we are really working hard. We know that our data shows a need to improve in this area. We've done a big push out, just, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, we met with the principals and gave them their individual data at their campuses as to how they're doing as, as in regards to least restrictive environment. And I think this was the first time that we really got down to the campus level, and it really helped them realize how them, as, you know, the principal and their campus can really work together to contribute to that overall district goal of improving our, you know, improving students' least restrictive environment options throughout the day. Certainly, we also want to, want to push AP classes. We want to make sure that students, really, I think that this starts with teachers, and making sure teachers understand, gone are the days when students with disabilities, you know, can't be in AP classes. But we need to figure out, what do we need to make sure they have the access, and make sure our committees have the right information in order to determine the appropriate accommodations needed for those classes? Because sometimes it's more of a behavioral challenge, an anxiety challenge, things like that, that we need to do differently than we would for a student that may have some instructional accommodations. So certainly, those are things that we're working on. Steve and I met a couple of weeks back when he was, well, I guess it's been about a month now ago, and we were talking about this, and how can we begin to collect the data to really see where we are, to know where we need to improve? And we didn't have some of that baseline data for our students with disabilities, which is what we're working on.
Good, thank you very much for that. That's great. So just two more questions in this area. One is, how are we, or are we taking steps to accommodate students in special education for our summer credit courses? And I know some of these are dual-credit courses, but some of them are just summer credit courses for high school. Because I know we're kind of in that area right now with my daughter, and making sure that we have the supports in place and the accommodations in place. How does that tie into this, or is that more of our push for just more of that philosophy of inclusion?
Well, I think during the summer courses, you know, students aren't, those aren't part of the R Committee decision. So oftentimes, and we're not talking about extended school year services through the R Committee for students with disability, we're talking about students want to go retake a course because they failed it, or perhaps if we allow, I can't, I don't know, if we allow students to take it ahead of time.
Late health credit, or, yeah.
Yeah. So we usually, in talking with my team about this, is, as a student's. So we usually, in talking with my team about this, is as the students enroll, we find out who is enrolled and then we look those kids up and find out what their accommodations are. And then we provide that information to the teacher at the summer school campus. It's definitely an area that we need to improve because we had a couple of glitches this summer and we talked about, you know, ways that we can make sure that we have follow-up conversations, not just hand out the accommodations, but how are we making sure that teachers are implementing those accommodations with fidelity? So it's an area of improvement, but we certainly want to make those accommodations available for kids that choose to go to summer school.
Okay, yeah, so that's good because as, I mean, so I know, just taking my personal experience, my daughter wants to do a lot of electives. She likes theater and she likes, you know, all these things. And so as kids, you know, we've talked about the endorsement pathways and that type of thing. Kids are taking their health courses, you know, beforehand or over the summer and they are taking their speech courses and these credits that they have to have. And so we're struggling a little bit with having those options so that she can fill out her schedule with other things during the year. So that's good to hear that you guys are considering more of that.
And we'll do the same for 504 because we have a roster of our 504 students and we connect them with the kids that are going to summer school.
Okay, so my last question is related to endorsements specifically because we know we have the law that says if a course is modified, that a student's not going to get credit for that endorsement. How can we as a district get around that? Or how can we as a district, you know, I'm struggling with a way to articulate that because Fort Ben ISD, you know, is there a way that we can provide credit for our students in a way that doesn't violate the law, but allows them to, allows us to acknowledge that they took that endorsement class and regardless of whether it was modified pursuant to an IEP, that they are going to get credit for that class? Is there not a way that we can get around that?
They get credit for the class. That's, you know, if they take, if they take the course, they're going to get credit for the class if they pass it. What the law says is it doesn't prevent them from taking the course, it's just saying, stamping that as an endorsement, you know, for them. So if they take the class and it's modified and it's, they, you know, they will receive credit for it. So it's not a matter of, and they'll learn, you know, whether it's, for instance, I know there's some specifications for like some of our CTE courses. Some of them have to take a safety exam that they have to take before they can take the course and others don't require that. But they still get credit for any class they take with us. It's just we cannot designate it as a coherent sequence within, if it's modified within that endorsement. That's what the law states. I'm thinking, don't you think it's going to be some changes there?
Well, the last legislative session, they were not in favor of that. It's still up there, it's still a discussion. But I think maybe what you're talking about a little bit more is for students who have a much more modified curriculum, are there ways that we can be creative where they can participate in those classes, gain from the coursework, but not actually be required to take the certification exam? And maybe if their post-secondary goal is to be a baker, you know, maybe so are there classes that they could take along the way with their non-disabled peers that would help prepare them for their post-secondary goal, but that they weren't taking an articulated course, that they weren't taking the certification and could they benefit? And there are ways to do that. It's a lot of collaboration between KATE and special ed and some modified coursework and some local courses. But districts are starting to do that more and more. And I think that that's certainly something that we can consider.
Yeah, so that, I mean, you stated it very well. I mean, that's, that's really what I'm asking is how can our kids have access to this in order to further their career, you know, college and career goals, even though the law says?
And Mr. Tosson, there's a lot, there's quite a few endorsements that are not CTE endorsements and they have access to all that curriculum and all those courses.
And I believe then in the job market, then the transcript becomes the document. Yes, I took this class of, of the training the students have participated in. Because whether or not they, they earn an endorsement, their transcript shows the coursework they've taken.
Okay. And at the risk of being disrespectful to the great state of Texas, we're the only ones that are going to be putting those endorsements and the colleges are telling us that they're not even looking at them. I'm sorry to have to say that. But they're looking at accepting kids from all over the country and we're the only state that has endorsements. Now, whether that'll change in the future or not, and again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to this great state.
Thank you guys very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. It was an excellent presentation update and I know we'll look forward to hearing from you in the future with additional updates and data, as you mentioned. Next on our agenda is for the board to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We have some personnel matters tonight as well as a matter related to personally identifiable information about a public school student. The board is now convened in closed session.